I'm going to welcome everyone to the April 11th meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners, and be pleased if you would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask that we all take a few moments and remember all those who have served, and who still serve our country, hearing abroad, and for those who have given their lives for us. So we'll begin with public comment. If there is anyone who wishes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, welcome to the opportunity. Hearing none, we will go to our first agenda item, and that is a bid award and execution of a contract for a consultant to provide professional services in Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, and that individual is Andrew.
Perhaps I could start it off. I went over the terms of the contract, and they seem to be consistent with what we have approved before. I didn't see any significant changes. There's no change in the amount of compensation that's being asked for, and I believe that, based upon what I see as evidence of, let's say, of superior past performance, I would certainly hope that we would look at that favorably and move forward with it.
Well, I would agree. I looked it over as well, and it certainly meets the scope of services, and what we are looking for from an individual like Andrew to perform this work. So I have no issues with the language in the contract. Jill, do you?
No, neither do I.
So I'll move the quote of the contract.
I will second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, anonymous. Mr. Gottlieb.
Well, thank you.
Another year.
Another year in the ball of fun.
Yeah. So I just wanted to take a few minutes and just sort of update you on some things you've asked me to stay on. You know, we've worked through and completed the public outreach program that you asked, and you directed a call to begin the evaluation of the...
Do you have another copy, please?
Yeah, of the regional wastewater alternative. Copy is available. So what we did was, you know, your suggestion, we worked through the Steering Committee, the Water Protection Collaborative, actually through both the Governing Board and the Steering Committee, and came up with this general framework, and the Steering Committee voted to adopt it. Look at it, we'll post it up. The basic way that we laid this out was a fundamental problem statement, so why are we doing this? And this is really the only assumption that's in this document. The assumption that's in this document, guides the whole thing, is that as a region, the Cape acknowledges that we have a water quality problem in our estuaries, and that we have an obligation, and I don't care whether you do that as a legal, moral, economic obligation, as a region we have an obligation to deal with the problem. That's the only thing that's assumed in this document. There's no assumption in here about the outcome of the analysis, there's no assumption about which is going to be the best, most cost-effective way to proceed, but it does start with the assumption that we know we have a problem, we're going to do something about it. And if we can't get to that point, I don't know what we're talking about.
Chair, just let me interrupt at this point. I happen to be reviewing a 10-year-old interview that I had before I was first elected to County Commissioner, and it very specifically, I was quoted very specifically in saying that we have a significant problem with regard to water and wastewater management here in the Cape, and we need to do something about it. Intervening 10 years, we've recruited people, we've tried to organize a response, we've created committees, and I think that the time for action is long overdue, so my point at that time was, I do not want my grandchildren 20 years from now to say to me, "You knew that there was a problem, Papa, why didn't you do something about it?" So I certainly hope that you know that I'm on board.
Right, exactly.
So anyway, so that's the only assumption in here, despite, you know, there's a lot of people that sort of jumped to the conclusion that this is a process that's sort of, you know, less than answer that's already been derived, and I think, you know, that's not every bit the case, and it's not embedded in this. So then we worked through and sort of say what the task is, which is basically just reiterating what you told us to do. You know, go figure it out, do an analysis of the costs and benefits of a regionalized approach compared to the town-by-town approach, which is what we have now, and develop some facts and numbers that will allow the region to have a fact-based conversation about which alternative is best, that we come back to you quarterly, report on progress, and then we give you a report and recommendation by the end of the calendar year. So that's the task. And then the approach that's laid out in here is, again, you told us to get broad public input, and so to, you know, live up to the spirit of what we thought we heard from you, we've chosen an approach that provides sort of a step-by-step opportunity for the public to have input and understanding of the analysis we're doing, and then discussion and input in what some of the alternatives are as we go. And that's compared to a process that might, you know, take it in-house, do a lot of analysis, come up with a recommended approach, and then put that out for public discussion? We didn't think that was really what you wanted. What we thought, and what we thought best served the region, was that we, you know, bring fully along the public in the discussion as we're having it. So the way we structured it is, based on what's on the second page, we have some broad categories of issues, and between myself and staff of the Commission, we'll develop some analysis around each one of these issues, have first a discussion with either the Governing Board or the Steering Committee of the Collaborative, depending on what the monthly schedule looks like, get some input from them, and then go out and hold a couple of public meetings about each particular topic. And the meetings will be structured around the notion that we'll spend the first half of it, let's say, presenting the analysis and what we see, the way we frame the issues, and then spend the second half getting, either having a discussion or receiving comments. Depends how the people in the audience who attend would want to do it. Some people come with something to say, and they want to say it, and that's the end of it. Other people want to engage you in a conversation to explore the issues more fully. We'll do it either way. And then to the extent those issues are put to bed, we'll move on to the next ones. So as we go, we'll have opportunity to ongoing basis, get public input in what we're doing. And then, so the schedule will be, we will post and keep online on the Cape Keepers site, associated with this document, an active calendar, and that calendar will provide notices to where and when we're going to be talking about what issues. And we'll start to fill that calendar out. Paul and I have already started a series of meetings with the individually with the different boards of selectmen, so we'll sort of lay that calendar out. And then as we define when, we'll have the analysis to support any one of these particular issues, and we'll start scheduling public meetings, and we'll post those and publicize them. You know, I've heard we open today, that disadvantages people work at night, I've heard we do them at night, that disadvantages people who have nighttime commitments. We may end up doing two meetings, same topic, same place, one morning, one after, one evening. They will sort of work around that. We're going to do some Saturdays. You know, we're going to shift the...
That's going to be a best...
We're going to shift the schedule around so that, you know, we give people a fair opportunity to get some input in. It won't mean that any given meeting, somebody won't have an opportunity to, kind of given their schedule, but we're not going to pick Wednesdays at night and stick to that come hell or high water, bounce it around depending on what's going on. So that's the overall approach. As I said, the Collaborative Board was comfortable with it, and they voted to accept it. I wanted a chance to run it by you, but intention is to just post this up, you know, today, tomorrow, and say this is the way we're responding to the directive that we received from the Commission.
Is it a fair question to say that what you're doing is performing a functional analysis of the need? And if the functional analysis is a result of that, would the public input would come out with a, what I'd call, a form of structure to reform it with?
Yes.
I've used that description, and it's been accepted by, you know, by people once they've heard it, and they've heard some of what I call an out-of-context lifting of phrases of different things that have been heard by different elements. And I noticed that the Cape Cod Councilors, excuse me, Cape Cod Selectment and Councilors Association had put out a disclaimer saying that they had been in error when they had posted that as a meeting about the Cape Cod Authority.
Yeah, Paul and Larry Ballantyne and I are meeting with the Selectment and Councilors Association on Friday, and we were asked to go to talk about this process. You know, my piece, my and Larry's piece is going to be this process. Paul's going to focus a little bit more on the modeling tools that the Commission's putting together. We were both a little surprised the other last week when we saw the posting that said, "Come to a meeting with the three of us are going to talk about our experience with the MWRA." And, you know, I talked to Austin Knight, who's the president and chair of the group, last week, and said, "This isn't what we signed up for, and this isn't what we're planning on talking about. We really don't have anything to say about it because it's not that relevant to what we're doing here." So it got changed to be, you know, more in line with what we had intended to go speak about and what we had agreed to speak about. Obviously, some people have made an issue of the fact that, you know, we changed the title, but, you know, the reality is neither Paul nor myself nor Larry had any input in what this thing was titled, and we didn't know what it was titled until we saw the thing. As soon as we saw it, we corrected the misrepresentation of what the intent of the speech was.
And they in turn...
And they acknowledged that. It was, you know, I don't...
They revised the agenda.
I think it was, you know, an honest mistake that triggered some fairly predictable reactions from some people.
Well, you know, having said that, you know, Paul has acknowledged that he had experience in the past with the MWRA, basically as an attorney suing that effort on two different levels. And you've had different experiences in your life. We just signed this contract. And I think that people have to understand that you're part-time, but you are a consultant to us in many respects. And, you know, we sought you out because of your expertise, and I didn't know if you wanted to just sort of talk about, talk about any of that.
Well, I mean, there's been, you know, I mean, my role in interaction professionally with MWRA, not quite like Paul's in the sense of being litigious with them, but I ended up working with, worked for a couple of legislators, you know, on water supply issues when I was in the State House, and it was a somewhat adversarial relationship because of the time it was around the MWRA's plans to divert the Connecticut River, use the traditional water supply to the Boston metropolitan area. So I had a lot of familiarity with the MWRA, but never, you know, never been on their side, as it were. You know, and there's been some issues made about the part-time nature of my work for you and the other part, you know, nature of the work that I'm doing. And as you said, you're like, I consult, I have other clients, and as I put in the first bid that I made with you five years ago, and I reiterated today, in this bid that none of the other client work that I have has any interest on Cape Cod. I keep my business interests separate. I have no other client interest on Cape Cod or in any way that intersects with what we're doing here. Most of the rest of my time is done on energy and energy efficiency, working with cities.
Indeed, you had disclosed all of this.
And I had, yes, I had disclosed that at the time we hired a counsel because it was a relevant issue about, you know, a sort of second-order relationship there. And so we, you know, disposed of that appearance issue by fully disclosing as a lot provides. But, you know, as much as some people want to make something out of nothing, that there is no record to demonstrate it, you know, I have no perceived or actual conflict in any way with any of the other business dealings I have and what my obligations are to you.
And quite frankly, it's always been out in the open, and it's always been, you know, everybody's acknowledged it. And as they say, a lot of the reason that you're here is because of your experience and knowledge.
And in fact, the signature block, and it's become an issue, the signature block on my email, because up until recently, you know, I ran everything through my own Gmail account, so, you know, I have a signature block, so, you know, and it says, you know, it identifies me as Principal of Zarvik Corporation, which is where I do my energy efficiency work. So I've probably sent out 15,000 emails...
Over the last five years.
Over the last five years since I began engaged in that, that have that, whether it's work that was relevant to the county, or whether it was, you know, a quick note to my mother and my wife and my kids, telling them when I was going to be home for dinner. They all got the same thing, and there was no particular... They didn't take it into anything other than the signature block. I've recently, to avoid any additional discussion or confusion about the matter, changed and created a county email address. And I'm in the painful process of trying to transition everyone and myself to stop communicating me through my personal account that one of the issues that pertained to Barnstable County, and to use that, just so that there's no issue of the marriage between, you know, what is email that's relevant to what I work on doing here and what's not. Secondly, you know, as you know, we've had a number of different Freedom of Information Act requests. It has been complicated and time-consuming responding to those because they are embedded in, you know, in one large server through the Gmail account, which, you know, I'm the only one who has access to it, so it takes a lot of time. You go through all those and sort them through. It's not as easy as when you get a request through the county server and you can just run a tape, produce something, and be done with it.
Oh, is that right?
Yes, that is right. So...
Well, that can be hard sometimes. That can be difficult sometimes, too.
That can be, right, it can be difficult. But anyway, so I've, you know, I've attempted to sort of proactively address that issue, and so, you know, no longer, to the extent possible, obviously somebody sends me something. I can't do anything about that other than remind them the next time when responding to use the other email address, but in the process of trying to convert over to that other email address.
On the flip side, though, it's been very open and transparent, so there's never been a question.
I don't know, it's hard to say you're hiding something when every single email you send out identifies yourself with a signature block, so it's not like, you know, not like it's hard to figure out.
Well, I happened to hear a very lengthy discussion the other night from a group of shellfishermen. And they have been in the business, say, at least 20 years, and their father, their fathers were before them, and before that, I mean, the families have, and mostly that's how it works, I think, with a lot of shellfishermen. It's been a family thing. But the topic of the conversation had to do with the contaminated relay, you know, from the Taunton River now, that the state had been asking towns to accept some of this relay, put it in cleaner water so that they could purify themselves. But I guess it was just listening to them, and listening to them talk about the decline in the shellfish over the last 20, 25 years, which really relates to the contamination of the waters. And so it was a real learning experience for me to listen to all this, because I'd never really heard it in that depth before. But I'm thinking, how might they somehow be part of the planning going forward? I mean, they see the waters every day when they're out there, so they know what it's like.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, in this sort of problem statement, you know, when we talk about economic obligation to deal with this, I mean, shellfishermen are front and center.
And we already have a connection with the shellfishermen through the cooperative extension.
Well, we're also working with, we're working with Matthew Falmouth and Wellfleet on the Oyster propagation programs as a...
Not Born? Not Born? Born has a very active program.
They, we specifically have been engaged by those three communities to work on it from the perspective of, as a nitrogen management tool. I think Born and a lot of the other towns have them, and I'm not saying that Born doesn't use it for this, but a lot of them use them for, you know, recreational shellfishing opportunities, or some of the commercial opportunities. Three towns we're working with, you know, are looking at it as, in addition, one of the other attributes is the nitrogen piece that we're working with them. We're pretty plugged into the shellfish community.
Make sure that they were really on foot there.
On that. You know, and other than that, I think that, you know, certainly the charge you gave us got people's attention, and, you know, you know, I think we're well underway in fulfilling the mission you gave us to do. And I think that, you know, there's been a lot, you know, there's been some corners that have sort of already decided what we're going to conclude, or to conclude to themselves what the conclusion is, so they sort of set up this strong man, and we're very busy knocking it down.
I've already made a conclusion, that we're going to solve the problem. We're going to do something about it.
At least we'll have solutions on the table.
And, you know, the work we're supposed to do over the next eight months is to figure out how best to do that, what's the cheapest, most environmentally sound way to do that, and then let people compare what they're doing now to what that alternative is. If they're wanting the same, that's fine.
Well, I think...
If they're not wanting the same, then, you know, we need to make a decision about how we want to proceed.
When Rambo Leary made that statement at the Assembly a couple of weeks ago, when he used the word wastewater authority, you know, taxing authority, he said he used it because he wanted to put a stake in the ground and let people know that for 10 years, nothing's really been happening in any positive way, at least bringing it together. And it did get people's attention, and they could, I think everybody realizes that if we don't start working on the regional solutions and the alternatives, and whatever else seems to, seems to be workable and would be able to fix the problem, we don't have to go there. But if we don't work together, I'm not saying it's out there on the horizon, because it isn't, but we also know that that is, could be a very last resort if we don't work together and come up with the right solutions for the Cape. I don't see that as a right solution for the Cape, but we have to work together to find the right solutions.
Senator Dan Wolf, you know, reiterated that, that, you know, whatever it may be, whether it's just a regional plan and an approach that is agreed upon by everyone to go forward with, or it results in, you know, a federation of upper Cape towns and lower Cape towns, and they have their mission and they're going forward, and sort of coordinating and keeping in touch with each of those efforts, that's still, in a sense, a plan, that's a regional plan. And for him, and for any of our legislators, it's much easier to go up there and say, "We're doing this for Cape Cod," because everyone in, you know, a lot of people in Washington will know what Cape Cod is, even if they've never been here. Most people won't know, like, what the town of Wellfleet is, or, you know, "I'm doing this for the town of, you know, Falmouth." That doesn't resonate the same way.
Well, you've put Wellfleet on the map.
Yeah, I know. Well, maybe now they do. You're right. But no, it's, but it is, and that's really the point, is that if we speak with one voice, we will be much more likely to have that federal and state monies to come here and help us.
I look at this as the need of creating an operations order. You know, I spent a fair amount of time when I was on active duty, you know, in writing exercise scenarios and examining operations orders, and overlooking that now is avenues to the objective. Our mission is clear. And the other part is, we have to take a look at the tail, and the rest of the pieces and others supporting. I think this is a good start. Now, when are you going to come back and tell us what partnership you need with us?
Well, we're, you know, we did this one in...
May. No, we, May is the next one.
May is the next one?
Right.
So we're back in May.
May, obviously.
May, yeah. And quarterly is just, quarterly is just the minimum.
Yeah.
You want to see us sort of more frequently?
You can always call.
Just give us 48-hour notice.
Give you 48 hours' notice, and just let me see about what I want to speak about.
You also need to mention Capekeepers, too, .org, because that's the place where people can go and find out.
Yeah, thank you. The Capekeepers.org site is the place where we're posting a lot of this, all of this information, the analysis that we're putting out. We'll find other ways to try and convey it, but that's a good place for people to look.
And they can get that through Capekeepers.org or through the Barnstable County...
Or through, it's linked to Barnstable County, so you can get there a couple of different ways.
Right.
You can even get there through Capekeepers.com through the BOPZ domain also.
Well, I already have you scheduled on August 14th in Wellfleet, so I know that I sent that memo to you for the non-taxpayers, Non-Resident Taxpayer Association.
Yeah.
So, so they're very eager, and that is a huge group, and they're, you know, they have a lot at stake, and they want to understand. So those are groups that we have to think about through the summer while they're here as well.
Well, we plan on being out and about a lot. And the other thing I had mentioned, that we got an agreement from members of the Governing Board, you know, we go to, specifically, specifically when we go to their town, but in others, you know, we're going to have, it's not going to just be me.
Right.
There'll be other members of the Collaborative going, because, you know, they hear things differently sometimes than I do, and I think people might feel a little differently about how their feedback might be heard if there's other members of the Collaborative there, not just the staff, so we're out on the road a lot.
The other good thing about Saturdays is the town managers, I think, are going to plan on attending, because originally they had their monthly meeting. Originally, they weren't going to have their regular monthly meeting. They were just going to have this Friday Selectment and Councilors get together, but now they are having a regular meeting. I expect good attendance on Friday as well. So that's good.
Okay, sounds good.
Excellent.
Okay. Should I sign that?
That's great, yes. If you would sign that, we'll sign it. We're good to go.
You don't have a bunch of pens like they have?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a very short ceremony. Let's see, 11?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a few. Yes, they're all in front there. You survive time, time meeting.
Right.
Apparently.
Some of them are the producers.
Four nights.
What doesn't kill you makes you strong.
Okay, all right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Andy. Look forward to another...
The darkness here.
Yeah. Okay. And then, why don't we pick up some papers?
I don't have anything.
Do you have any?
Did you sign it? I didn't sign anything. I think it's only you, but anyway. Do I have anything? Well, you know, I had a very nice Easter and Passover weekend.
Yes, all three should sign it.
All three should sign.
Oh, yeah, well, I could say that as well.
But that's, I'm just trying to think about what else I did, too. I know I did something. Oh, yesterday, you know, Beth had a, has put in for a fireman's grant to do an assessment and exploration of workforce development in regards to homeless and, you know, people at a real poverty level. And yesterday, she had a meeting at the Transportation Center, and it was invited, you know, many agencies were there, human service agencies all across, just trying to figure out what workforce, what is the WIB, what is the history of the WIB? What are the funding sources? How does it interact? What does it look like? And it really is just sort of a 101. So that was yesterday. It was really very interesting, this guy, Jeff Bean, I believe his name was, gave a very thorough, a view from 10,000 feet, is what it was called. And then on the 22nd of May, there will be a panel with the Workforce Development, Chris Dower, David Augustino, and I guess a couple of other members, just to talk about what workforce development is and how it works with the community, and ways that, you know, just to interact with these agencies to see if there's any other new approaches and outreach they could do. So it's, you know, I think very beneficial, yeah.
And they're close to their annual meetings, I recall, so that's usually what they do with their annual meetings, so it sounds like they're rehearsing for it.
Yes, yes, great, great.
I think that's great. I did remember one thing. I sit as your representative on the Human Service Needs Committee in the town of Barnstable, and they're getting very close to making their final report to the Town Council of Barnstable about the addiction issues. They've reached out to most of the agencies that, you know, are connected with it. But we had a feeling that we hadn't included this, you know, the school system in the town of Barnstable or the hospitals, so we're reaching out to the hospital and to the schools about their, you know, their observed behavior with regard to addiction, and they, we should have, I think the public could in about two months, and then have a final report and ask for a workshop at, you know, for the town of Barnstable on that, on a very important issue. And although the natural focus of a town, a Barnstable Committee, is in Barnstable, many of the things that they're addressing, you know, have a regional application, and the work of the committee has been very good, and a lot of what I call very important educational things. I must say that we've gotten good support from the Barnstable Patriot, and as a matter of fact, they had a wonderful editorial in last week's edition on, you know, on the work of this committee, and I believe that, you know, they're continuing to follow, and they have been, see, Ed Molyneux has been attending the meetings and reporting on it. So there's a lot of good things going on over there, and hopefully we'll get a handle on what needs to be done going forward. And by the way, the Cape Cod Times as well had a wonderful front-page article on, you know, on what the jail is doing, and it turned out that the folks that you had... that you had in your article had been at our committee about the week before and it's essentially gone over the same matter. So there are a lot of positive things in addressing this very serious issue, you know, that's out there. And keep advised as to how we make progress with it.
And there is communication with our humans because, you know, death has a lot as far as the addiction, suicide prevention and, yeah, so that's.
That's great.
Mark, I do have a couple of things. I wanted to, you are addressed as a letter from the sheriff. And he is expressing his strong disagreement with one of the recommendations from the special committee and county governance. And that's number nine, the Public Safety and Emergency Management. Do you want this just for you to have that? Yes, thank you. So I just received that the other day. I also received a letter from the Town of Bourne Shore and Harbor Committee indicating their happiness with the dredging of Penn Cove in Bourne and their commendation for Wayne Jetke. He did a terrific job. So just so you know about that.
Will that be put into his personnel file?
Yeah, we can do that.
We can do that.
And the Barnstable Firefighters Association has asked to use the county complex parking lot on Saturday, May nineteenth, for the twentieth Annual Barnstable Village Road Race. And that's something we've done. So if I could have a vote to approve.
I'll move that.
A second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed unanimous.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Is that your whole week?
Vermont has their annual conference in Woodstock, Vermont. They usually move it around. Vermont is the Public Utilities Risk Management Association.
Is it to Woodstock then?
They are having it in Woodstock. It's a beautiful place.
Oh, the love. Fireplaces.
Before I was on this, they had that we quas it, so I missed that one.
It's also a much better place, by the way.
I noticed in, was it number sixteen, this is the EDC's consultant that they hired to go out and do the inventory.
That's right.
Of all the internet equipment, cable, whatever, in all the towns. And they awarded it to a company called Interlile Consulting Group. And I read the whole prospectus on that. They have an outstanding reputation. They really do. They've done a lot of good work, in-state, out-of-state. So, and they're starting to work April fifteenth, I think she said, or maybe next Monday. And it's, what is it, fifteen weeks, I think, from the date they start, they will be, or eighteen weeks from the date they start, they will be completed. So that will be very good information for all the towns to have.
And I'll give some kudos to Leish Penn and Elaine Davis.
Right.
They were very hard on putting that together. Good.
It was very impressive, I must say.
The, okay, so we're in the summary of actions. No, I don't have any other questions on that.
Okay. Well, we've already voted.
Okay.
No, we did.
We didn't? Well, in case we didn't, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed unanimous just to be on the safe side.
Billy, you moved it?
Yes, Bill moved it. I was second. The other, just follow up on some of our discussions.
Excuse me, if I may. Don't we have to vote on the minutes?
We do have to do.
Yes. And I'm not prepared to do that right now. I know that they're revised.
They are revised. It's like ours, email.
Of April fifth.
Yep.
They're not to vote tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna make a comment, but I don't think that, you know, when I was running for county commissioner, this was always like the minutes, which was just the summary of actions. But it really doesn't detail conversations that take place. Now I know that we have it filmed and people can go online and listen to that conversation, which is probably more to most people's liking. But for those who don't have that access and may wanna read some of the discussion highlights, I think that we have to have a little bit more detail in our minutes just to reflect conversation and deliberation on some of this.
Well, we'll have to think. That's a good comment. The open meeting law says that the minutes should reflect the, not just the topic of conversation, but it should reflect the discussion itself. It has to be substantive in some form so that anybody reading it would understand what we were talking about. And so maybe we do need to take a look at that and see.
Yeah. I mean, I don't look at this as minutes. I mean, I would.
That's not the answer.
This is the summary.
No, that's, that was number one, to vote.
Okay.
But we usually vote them separately.
Right. So, I mean, I think that I would just like to see the minutes with some sort of, I mean, just basically even the topics that we discussed, because the first round of us going over the special governance was really about the department review and those types of exterior or structural. And then the second conversation was governance. And not that we concluded anything on that, but at least there were certain topics that we, you know, the commission, the board, commission is the Board of Assembly of Delegates, you know, the pros and cons of different things. I mean, it doesn't have to go into detail. They can see the video.
So do you wanna hold it all until next week?
If I may. I would prefer to do that. So I would like to make a motion that we hold these, assigning these and.
You're talking about the minutes.
Accepting the minutes until next week, just to have some bullet points on what was discussed.
Okay. I'll second the purpose of the discussion. But I thought that we'd been noticed that there was a reference put into the minutes, that there had been a discussion and that the comment was that she didn't have detail on it. So I think there's part of the revision, perhaps the things that you're talking about might, you know, might be included just different ones. There were some specific references to items in the special commission's report that we did talk about. But to me, the most important thing that came out of that discussion was the decision that we would continue the discussion so that, you know, so that it was, and I'd also seem to recall that we had talked about having some type of a workshop or a retreat where we would spend what I would call a significant amount of concentrated and focused energy on looking at those so that we would get through them. And I think we also talked about the need of having a facilitator in order to, let's say, in order to manage.
You're sort of mixing apples in order to say that. So let's go back to the minutes. So if you wish to have someone to record minutes, then we can, we'll have to make those arrangements. And that's fine. I don't have an issue with that.
Well, I think that, well, we don't have this on the agenda today as a topic, but maybe we should put this on next week as a topic on the minutes. Because I think we need to talk about the value of minutes, not only for us as county commissioners, but not only just because maybe somebody wants to go and look and see, maybe they weren't there, but they knew that we had a topic of discussion that they may have been interested in and they're gonna read about it. And the third thing is the minutes for posterity, if you will. I mean, some people are gonna wanna go back twenty years and say, that topic came up at some point in time in 2012, like wastewater. And what did the commissioners talk about when they were discussing? You know, so I think we should have that conversation because all of those three pieces are all part of the minutes. And of course, the fourth is to comply with the open meeting law.
I think that's the.
That's the driving force. And so it would not hurt for us to really have that discussion and determine, is it better to have somebody look at a video and then take minutes from the video? Is it better to have somebody here who is actually not recording in detail, but recording in general summary?
I believe that's all we're required to do. And I think it's an important requirement that we have a summary so that, if I recall the language in the open meeting law, it says that if someone had not the opportunity to attend the meeting, that he would get the flavor, or she would get the flavor of what had been discussed. So that, so that if they were to come to another meeting and ask a question about it, it would be relevant in terms of what the sum and substance of the discussion had been. And I believe that's very clear in the open meeting law. And I think that when we have it next week to discuss, I think that that would be topic eight.
And just one other point that I think that we should somehow note is when we say, okay, we agree that this is worth discussing, this particular item. And I'm going to go to the item of the special commission dealing with human services. And we had discussed that, you know, maybe we should, I had made the point that Beth had some comments or observations about the housing component when that came up in the special commission, but it sort of veered towards HAC. So she didn't feel comfortable in sort of speaking about the counties, how she saw the county working with Paul Reschinskis. And there's a synergy there that she wanted to comment on, but she didn't feel it was relevant. She didn't wanna mix it up with the HAC discussion, that it gone into HAC. But, you know, last week, I said, or two weeks ago, I had said, you know, that would be, that would be good to have her and Paul Reschinskis here. And none of that is ever noted. How are we ever gonna go back to say, this is, these are things we said we were going to follow up on and do. So I would like the follow-up items listed of what we said we want to follow up on and then have a timetable on what's gonna be. Because I did mention it to Beth. She's very eager to come forward. And I don't know how long it would have taken before we got around to that discussion if we don't keep following up on it.
I think it's very relevant because in Howard, which I can speak to the relationship that, you know, the county has with regard to projects in my town. And I know that, you know, that that discussion that you're talking about is a very relevant one. Because although there has been evidence that has been a reduction in the amount of homeless people that have been found, there's also a question as to whether or not we are finding as many people, you know, that are really out there. So all of this, I think all of this is relevant. I believe that Paul Reschinskis has always been, always provided us with what I would call some very detailed and very useful information with regard to the overall topic. And I think that in a position of looking, from what you said in the report, looking at the, they say that workforce membership opportunities that we're trying to find for the homeless individuals also ties into some activities that we're trying to find for some of the disabled community with regard to support, let's say, supportive work environments in order to, let's say, in order to bring, you know, people into the world of work. And it's also a parallel activity. And the way the mail blew from the veterans has also, you know, pointed out the need of bringing that older group of veterans, providing some, you know, some kind of for that. So, and housing is an important part of that. So it's holistic and it all ties in together. And I certainly think it's a process to go forward.
Well, when you think too, that we do make executive decisions. And I can't tell you how many times over the years that I have had to go back to the records of a town meeting. Because the town meeting records are kept for beta. I mean, every single word is recorded. And you think, well, what did town meeting vote that night? And what was really, what did people say about it? I mean, what did the people think who were for it or the people who were against it? And what was the vote? Was there an overwhelming, a positive vote or whatever? And it really helps to go back. And I don't mean that this has to be word for word. But it's very, very helpful when you, when you're making executive decisions or even legislative decisions, that you can go back and actually get some, as you say, some flavor for what the discussion was and what was the vote.
Well, indeed, I think that, I think getting to this deliberation phase here.
Well, but that's part of the minute.
But I think that it's very important that we do make a definite, you know, we came up with a policy on public comment because it was driven by, you know, how do we control and run our meetings? And I think it's now time to, you know, to make sure that we do everything that we can to comply with the, both the, let's say, the letter and the intent of what minutes are supposed to contain.
Okay. So we'll put it on for next week?
Thank you. All right. Is there any other business? No? We all have meetings at two o'clock. So I don't have any other questions for you. Second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed unanimous. And we'll see you next week at what time.